Can I motion to recall the meeting to order?
So moved. A second.
Second. Both favor?
Aye.
Aye. This is kind of awkward, okay, for the benefit of the people at home if they can even hear me. Today is March 18th, this is a emergency meeting, we're scheduled to select one item on our agenda related to COVID-19, the town COVID-19 response and kind of action, but continuing to provide government services to the population. I am working remotely and we, in some ways, in some ways, a test of our ability to have meetings remotely, so I think we're going to find out whether or not we can do that test, but it didn't start well because the way we attempted to communicate, we couldn't be operational, so. I wanted to start Julie by asking you to prepare the document, which is a plan to launch this kind of remote action plan temporarily, like just an artist's overview of what this is and what you're proposing.
Sure, and I don't know, it's like my guess, but if you wanted to go over any of this, you and I worked on this a lot yesterday and the day before. I'll at least start by saying that, you know, we've heard a lot of the concerns, a lot is changing with all of the COVID-19 updates and trying to get ahead of things again. We heads to try to find out specifically in their own department, what access they would, if they had to go remote, what essential functions could be performed and trying to navigate through issues and solutions that they may have within their own department. So the selectmen received copies, thankful to our department heads for responding so quickly and trying to get an overview of their department. The selectmen, Roger, I have, I have printouts, I'll have to scan them and forward them to you so everyone can look them through, but we have, we have copies of all the department's responses.
Okay.
And then, taking those responses, we were looking at maybe having a plan in place potentially for Monday. Again, Kevin, if you want to sit in and take any of this that we've discussed, but what I've given you is an overview of what we were looking at, to try to make sure that the amount of production that the department heads and their departments are able to produce continues. We don't want to lose any productivity, but we also want to make sure that our employees feel safe and everything is constantly changing, so again, and staying ahead. What this plan proposes is limiting the Tuesday evening hours, so that Tuesdays end at four o'clock. The extended hours were an advantage to residents, but as the public, the town buildings are close to the public and we have employees who have daycare issues and things like that, they send a day really becomes more of a difficulty than a benefit. To encourage remote work and social distancing, we're asking departments to have one employee in their department at a time and to work on alternating schedules. So, you know, what Kevin has suggested is, you know, department heads will come in Monday, Wednesday, Friday, the assistant or clerical person in the office would come in on Tuesday, Thursday. That schedule could obviously be adjusted for each department as everyone has specific needs, but looking to try to make sure we keep just one person in a main office at a time to promote more isolation, but again, continue to get work done that needs to get done. Many of our department heads have access to laptops and phones, so we are able to do a lot more remote work, but there are still functions that need to be done in-house, which is why we would love to have some kind of staggered schedule that would again protect the employees. A main component of this plan would be employees need to be willing and able to come into work when asked. This would be looking to continue everybody's regular pay, but knowing that we have a staggered schedule, if an employee is unwilling to come in or unable to come, unable to come in, they have to use whatever pay time off they have accessible, vacation, personal sick. We're trying to be as flexible as we can be while making sure that we're getting the same amount of productivity completed as we would if we were all here Monday through Friday, but again, looking at taking, giving more protections to the employees. Social distancing is encouraged where necessary, people who are in-house, you know, try to communicate with other departments via telephone or email. Let's see what else I'm missing here. And then each department is expected to complete all regularly scheduled work, including essential functions that they've listed on their forms. Department heads will provide weekly update reports to the town administrator to confirm their progress and indicate any challenges that they may be facing. So we'll be making sure that all of the departments are keeping up, nothing is falling behind and, you know, we want to come out of this whenever it ends in the same position work-wise as we would have been if everyone were here full-time Monday through Friday.
Yeah, Roger, it's Kevin Gaspur.
Yeah, I'm watching you on TV, so I'm like, I can't do that.
Okay, so as Ms. Hebert said, you know, you know, Mr. Chairman, that we've had some employees that are uncomfortable with working alongside of other employees, so Ms. Hebert and I worked together on this remote action plan. I think it's important that we, we have this remote action plan in place just in case of, you know, any further virus spread through Bristol County and area counties, so I think it's a good plan to put in place just in case there's, the federal government, the state government comes with any particular moves and lockdowns and things of that nature. We were proactive in having this plan developed. It's good for the exercise for the employees. I hope that the employees in the town doesn't have to utilize this action plan too much longer, but only time will tell, right? So we, the Board of Selectmen put in a first phase of their COVID-19 response plan with shut-in-town buildings, I think this is the second phase the Board of Selectmen are looking at implementing for our employees now, even though we still remain close to the public. I think it's about giving a peace of mind to the employees and department heads to understand how we move forward, but we keep the town doing business, you know, about as usual as we can, Mr. Chairman. I like the plan and Julie did a good job putting this together and, you know, we tossed around some ideas about how we could accommodate employees. I think this does it, I think it's pretty well suited for the employees. I don't think there's a whole lot more that we can do at this point in time. The nice thing about a 30-day action plan is we can just keep continuing it down the road. It's not just for the first 30 days, if need be, the Board of Selectmen can say, we are continuing the 30-day action plan and this can go on for 30, 60, 90, whatever we need to do at the time, but it allows flexibility for the department heads to already have something in place while things aren't severe yet. We'll be able to run this over the next week and see what's, what speed bumps we hit and Julie will keep the board abreast on, you know, any kind of issues that are arising from this remote action plan. Are you there, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, it's difficult to, you know, watch the TV on the phone signal. So I do like the evolution of this plan, I think, I think Julie, when you and I spoke yesterday, you know, it felt like this was heading towards, we're going to go completely dark, let everybody work from home, and I, you know, I think we need to keep government open. I think the one thing that, that I'd like to assure is that the residents have full access to government services. I, you know, we talked about it in the first, yesterday, Julie, and I'm not, I'm not going to say a comment, but, you know, we can't block out residents and say you can't have access to the assets of the town, that we need to provide residents with full access to government services, and I think we've done all we can do, we've done a lot, made big steps towards securing our employees, but we've got to balance that against, you know, we need to provide full services to our residents, so. I do like the evolution of this plan, that we're keeping government offices open, and I'm, you know, I'm fine with people working remotely, and I felt that the first iteration of this was we will go be dark, everybody was working from home, and I was uncomfortable with that, so provided we, we've done people, and we not providing services to our residents, I'm eyeing towards hope.
Yeah, the plan, the plan does that, Mr. Chairman. We, again, Julie and I spoke the following day on Thursday and we, Julie was saying what other town managers and town administrators have been discussing, and that's where we came up, it's got this willing, the employees have to be willing and able, and I think that when we derived to the plan where Mondays, department heads would come in and figure out what needs to be done for the week as they would normally do on any other occasional week that we were regularly scheduled, and then Tuesdays, the clerical and other staff would come in, and then Wednesdays, the department heads come back in, check back, check all the work, and what they put down is a list for their clerical and regular staff would have to do, and then Thursdays, they could come, the clerical people would come back in, and then Fridays, the department heads would come back in to make sure that everything is, is being completed and the employees were showing up to do the key essential functions of town government, and we are there to, we answer phone calls and provide a service to our public as best as we can under the conditions that we're working under right now, albeit, if the severity of this gets any worse than what we're already seeing, you know, this 30-day action plan might not be, you know, the plan will be there, but we may not be requiring, given what the state governor says or the federal government says, we might be saying that nobody is to report to town hall facilities and things of that nature, but the board has that flexibility to discuss it at that point.
And if I can, if I can just extend on that, I think this is a good step between those two things. We don't know what's coming and again, what the federal government or state government might, might say from here. I know people have talked about stay-in-place orders and we don't, we don't know what will happen, so this is a good middle step where, where we have people who need remote access are getting it, already have it or are getting it right now, and in the meantime, we work to keep town halls as open and functioning as possible while keeping people safe, and then if we were to get some kind of future order that changes this, at least the most essential functions are able to be done remotely and we're ready for that too.
I mean, the only thing I did ask, I'll add, and I'm, you know, I'm not here working remotely, I, I think that all of us, to the extent that we don't need to be in town halls for going into town hall, I think, you know, we can maybe take well over the telephone and to the extent that we don't need to be there, I think we need to do our part and isolate ourselves from the employees of the town hall and employees and the employees from us as well, so, to the extent that that's possible, I think that would improve. That's all I know. I get a motion to endorse the plan, that's proposed, almost anybody else has heard the discussion, I'm responding.
No, this plan addresses my concerns that I expressed to my fellow board members and to the town administrator throughout the week. This is just the culmination of it all, and I believe, right, Mr. Gaspur, would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the remote action plan as presented.
And I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed? Any further, any further issues to discuss? This isn't a one-topic agenda, but I think anything related to that topic in this meeting would be appropriate while we're in session.
Mr. Chairman, we have, any questions?
No, I, I am on the agenda for the Tuesday night meeting regarding town meeting.
Sorry, you can't hear me.
We have Ms. LaVani in the audience, social distancing, mind you, she's six feet away from everybody, and so just now when she walked by, but it's okay. She, she's going to go up to the podium.
At the last meeting, it was discussed about town meeting possibly delaying it and what would be needed if that was to happen. Currently, there isn't a law on the books that does allow the moderator to make the change, so as soon as we know if there is going to be a cancellation or a postponement, we need to get that information out. There is not a problem of still holding the election before the town meeting, that's not a problem, but if we are going to postpone town meeting, we need to, to start thinking about what, what action steps and where we might be moving it to.
Okay.
Okay, and we'll need to talk with moderator to make sure that, because it has to come from him essentially.
I believe Julie and Kevin, did we postpone next week's selectmen's meeting? Did we cancel that?
The selectmen's meeting for next week has been canceled.
For Tuesday, oh, okay, then I'm glad that I had the opportunity to speak today.
Yep, and assuming we'll still keep the election for May 16th?
Yeah.
Okay, and we'll make a decision on the, the annual town meeting?
Okay.
We'll address that, that's pretty far out. We're trying to do an immediate response plan right now to where we are, so that we're trying to be as precautionary instead of reactionary, right? I think that's the goal of the Board of Selectmen, is to take these many steps of precautionary actions that we can't now, we don't know what's going to happen. I think that the board's doing what they have to do to provide some comfort to our employees and for the board to have a plan in place so that we're not being reactionary instead of being precautionary when it comes to movement and how we're going to do business. So this is kind of the second phase, as I said, so there'll probably be multiple phases to it. We'll see how this thing transpires, we don't know, right? We know now we have cases in Bristol County and Plymouth County, right, where we didn't a week or two ago, so we don't know how this is going to, if this will escalate or not, but the Board of Selectmen have to do what we're doing today, discussing something that's maybe 50, 60 days out right now?
Right.
We'll figure that out, the board will figure it out, you'll be the first one to know, I'm sure.
I hope so. I just thought it was important, because I know that there was discussion about the warrant articles just the other day, where there is a timeline for getting the warrant books printed by your office, so I just, I want everybody to be prepared, that is also something that we do need to consider.
Okay.
Okay.
Right now, our next scheduled meeting is the 31st, is that correct?
Yes.
Make a, yes, okay, so our next scheduled meeting is the 31st.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So we'll figure out what's going to occur for the Board of Selectmen's meeting on March 31st. We have postponed the Tuesday night meeting.
Yeah.
Again, due to this coronavirus, it's moving, it's moving in different directions every day, right? So we have to keep listening to what the federal and state government are telling us what to do and what we have to do, and then we adjust our plans accordingly from there, but for right now, this was just a plan in place for the town government to be able to operate under, it's like a mini umbrella that we're working underneath of right now, so everybody knows what we're doing here.
Okay.
So, Roger, we, I'll, Pam?
I'm also.
Do you want to come in with a second question? What, what, what would our deadline be at that date? Town meeting's May 11th, what would our deadline be to make a decision after we move that date out? I suspect there's a point of no return on the table number table.
So, he's saying May 11th, what is the, we're talking about.
I want to have May 11th, there's things we need to do that on May 11th.
Right, what he's saying, there's things to do on May 11th, it's hard to hear you in here, Roger, so I'm just, I'm just referring the question back, back to Pam. He's asking, what is the deadline? We know we have to post 15 days before May 11th the warrant, but then you're talking about printing and stuff like that, so, Miss Leonard's?
I would think, I, we have a schedule upstairs, I didn't think to bring it down, because I didn't think we would like to talk about that right now, but we do have a certain schedule that we try to follow, depending on, you know, how things are going. It depends on the finance committee, whether they can meet, it depends on the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, but normally, on the normal circumstances, I think, Roger, you're asking on the normal circumstances, what is that threshold, right?
There's a, there's a 15-day posting requirement, so in order to have the, the town meeting, we need to have at least 15 days advance to post it, and before that time, we would need at least, at least one, at least one meeting to be able to go through everything and, you know, the finance committee especially, because they give the recommendations that go along.
Right. And I, for my end of that, we have voter registration, which is 20 days before May 11th. That's the, the final deadline for voter registrations.
And even if we postpone it, it doesn't matter if, for that, for that, what'd you call it?
Early voting.
The, no, the voter registration.
Registration for 20 days?
Yes.
So if we postpone from May 11th to, you know, May 21st, let's throw out a date?
Yeah.
You have to go by 20 days before the May 21st, or can you just say, no, we didn't do it in time, and it's 20 days before May 11th, is that a real sticking point for you?
No, we would have to just change the date. So if we're going to go further out, so will the voter registration.
So will the voter registration.
Right.
Yeah, okay, so, thank you, Pam. Roger, so we voted in the remote action plan, do we want to, do we want to discuss how long we're going to do this schedule, are we just going to say this is the schedule indefinitely until we know that, you know, restrictions are lifted and things of that nature? Do we want to, do we want to do, you know, put this plan in place, just because we called it a 30-day action plan, to, you know, do we want to put it in place for 30 days, or do you have something else in mind?
I'm comfortable with, with it till further notice, just based on the way things are developing, how possible saying it's open to notice in future, or?
Yeah, I, I.
Yeah, it does, someone said that.
It does wrap it up at the end.
Yeah, the last part just kind of says that, these arrangements are expected to be short-term, and the town of Acushant will continue to monitor guidance from health officials and the need for, for remote work arrangements. The town of Acushant may require employees to return to regular in-house work at any time.
So it's similar to, until further notice.
Just like that closing comment, it's hard to do, but just the closing comment, we need to figure out a better way to do this, so that it's, I don't think it's Zoom working or whatever, but I think if this is going to happen again, we need to figure out a better way to do this and make, so we can hear each other clearly.
Right, that's right.
So just to, just to follow up on that, so Chris Oliver, last night, it was close to midnight, he purchased the Zoom subscription, he was working on a few things this morning, so he wasn't able to come troubleshoot with us. There is a component that ties it into the cable, and that's what we were missing this morning, but he's working with the cable, the cable guys to get that all set up later today, and then hopefully the Zoom app, I guess, records everything, so even if you don't have video access and we had just a phone conversation, it would be recorded so that we'd be able to still post that, even if cable wasn't involved. So it seems like, it seems like a better overall package for us for having remote meetings, and again, you know, we may need a troubleshoot here or there, but once it gets set up, we're hoping it'll, it'll work much better.
Roger, we have, Roger, we have Jim Merritt in the audience, and he talked about the purchase agreement for the energy and that Kiasaj is looking for something just before they move to another community and ask them, they're just looking for a commitment.
Verbal commitment, Jim?
I don't know if you want Jim to go to the podium or speak from where he's at or whatever, but if you don't mind him coming up and talking to us for a quick second on that?
Yeah, the only, the only challenge is it's not on the agenda, so I'm not sure we can act on it, so that, I think conceptually, conceptually, we both have a movement to do it, right?
Yeah, conceptually, we just don't have any details, and they're trying to get in, if you just let Jim, I mean, it is, it is being presented because, you know, we can't hold meetings for the COVID-19, so.
State of emergency.
Right, right, I mean, we just, we just canceled our meeting for Tuesday due to, you know, all of these, the state of emergency, so I think this is appropriate to have come up here as it's somewhat of a part of that emergency.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me?
Good morning.
Yeah, I received a phone call this morning from Kiasaj, from Andrew Bernstein, who wanted to know, you know, what direction the selectmen wanted to go, and he's ready to move forward. I guess he said to me that Milis is looking for additional power, but he's hesitant to move forward, he wants to understand what our intentions are. He said if we wanted to move forward, he would do it by verbal agreement until such time as the details in the document were worked out and signed, and we would begin to receive, you know, credits immediately.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think conceptually, we're on board with that, I know he's sent some documentation from me, I'm reviewing this, this is another very recently, I think everyone does, so I think conceptually, we're on board, I think, you know, we need to understand what he's proposing and how it's going to work, we need to have the contract reviewed, but I think conceptually, everyone, everyone on the board was, wants to move forward.
So, so just, um.
Someone speaks for this, the Gaspur, just interrupt, that's the root of the board.
Yeah, no, Mr. Chairman, you're absolutely correct, that's what I said to Jim earlier, that conceptionally, we did, we did agree to it, but I, I have reservations without seeing the details, but I don't think the board wants to just blanket vote something where we don't know what we're voting, but conceptionally, we are in agreement to purchase so much power from Kiasaj. Jim's talked to me about some savings and things like that, but, you know, I don't think it's a wise choice for the Board of Selectmen to be voting things they haven't reviewed and understand.
And I think this, Mr. Bernstein, well, I've not been responsive, and he's sent some material, but again, there have been distractions, and it's just, it moved from something that was very important to it to a lesser priority given, given the other issues we've been dealing with, so.
That's fine, I don't think I've, I don't think I've seen the document that you guys are referring to, maybe I have, maybe I haven't, so we'll have to take a, I'll have to take another look at it as well, though, I think we can, if it's safe to say, Mr. Chairman, that all three members of the board should review it when they have time to do it and communicate with Ms. Hebert, town administrator, to give Mr. Merritt some guidance.
I'll also follow that too. Town council, I did forward it to them as well, and I can re-forward it, so you all have it, but town council has it and they are reviewing it, and so what they're looking at is the standard contract that just lays out the terms of the agreement. We had, was it CBE that we were doing?
Right.
So, ECA, so I think they're all pretty standard contracts, but obviously, you know, that's why we have town council checking through it, and, you know, we'll, we'll give you guys the update when town council gets back to us, but I'm sure they've been vocal down to.
Did Kiasaj express any date or time, like, we need this this afternoon, we need it Monday, we need it beginning of next week?
No, I think initially, they were looking at having something in hand by the end of March, so it really gives us another week, so.
Can you communicate with Kiasaj and just let him know that the board is still interested?
I will.
We talked about it, we just, we're reviewing, town council's reviewing the document, as well as board members reviewing the document that was presented, and, you know, we are looking to take action.
I'll get back to my office.
Because I look at it like, conceptually, yes, we, we are on board with this as far as the numbers, if they're exceptionally far off from what we, our basic understanding is from our meeting with them, then of course, there'd be further discussion about the numbers, but if everything is in line with what they proposed, you know, I'm, I'm still on board with it.
It's ultimately a series.
I wouldn't be in the position to start holding up, holding off, and then have them go, right, go in another direction, so, so conceptually, yes, if there's some, you know, just to keep it going over the next week, if they can wait a few days, you know, do we review stuff, I'm, I'm well over it, yeah.
Well, I had, I had one concern, and it was just that, you know, when I had spoken to Andrew prior to this, he was scheduled for hip replacement, which when I talked to him this morning, he said basically that this was to take place today, but because it's not essential medical, they postponed him indefinitely, so he will be around, and I'll make sure that, you know, everybody gets the information so you can look at it and.
Because I'll look at it and review it and proceed with it in a, in a time, you know, keep it rolling.
Thank you, Mr. Merritt. Roger, is this one other thing that I want to address with the board, and that is golf? We've only postponed closure of golf for one week, that would be to this Wednesday, coming Wednesday. I did receive a phone call from an employee at the golf course, you know, throwing some ideas around how they could open their facility up, but, you know, ultimately, there are still other relevant concerns for the board to take into consideration, i.e. people getting in and out of golf carts, bringing the golf carts back, other people getting into golf carts. So I don't know if the Board wants, you know, take any action as far as further closure, extending that deadline for the closure now, or do you, you want me to call and talk to Dana and, you know, tell him to put together a, his own action plan as far as how he could do business at the golf course and forward that to Ms. Hebert, so the Board can review it and maybe provide some guidance to the golf course before they just open their doors up on Wednesday?
Um, I mean, my gut is we could, I don't know, my gut is we could open the golf course and maybe just limit, you know, people congregating in the clubhouse. I, it just feels like the golf course would be something that, you know, it's an open-air facility for the most part, and, you know, limiting, limiting traffic through the clubhouse and finding a way to reopen, but, you know, I think we need to, we need to have Dana comment on what his concerns are.
Yeah, I, I spoke, but he called this morning, and I spoke with him, and he was kind of jokingly hinting at the drive-through window that I mentioned, right? So I said, he said, well, we can, we can kind of do this little drive-through window thing, and I can bleach down credit cards and take it through a little spot in a plexiglass window and things of that nature, so. I, I, you know, I think he's still concerned about public being in that small room area, and, and I think the members, at least I am, concerned about that same thing. So I think it, if you don't mind me talking and having further discussion with Dana on this and speaking with Julie on it to try to come up with a plan, if there's, if there's any good plan for the golf course, I don't know, but if you don't mind me working with Dana and Julie on that, I'd like to figure this out before they start announcing that Wednesday's their opening day and it shouldn't be their opening day.
Well, my.
Okay, Mr. Deroche would like to say something?
My position on it is to keep it closed for the immediate future. Not open on Wednesday, we're still exposing people to the virus, I understand. We talked about being outside. You're still gonna congregate people, you're gonna have people coming from different areas to play golf. This will be the only course open in the area. Once again, it's very similar to the Council on Aging or the Library, I consider it that way. I'm sure other people have different opinions that you're outside and spread out, but I play golf, you put four people together from different territories, or different locations, I should say, and you also have, sometimes you have backups, so you know you got eight people waiting on a tee box to tee off. I just don't feel we're in a position right now with how fluid this whole situation is to give my go-ahead to open up on Wednesday of next week, and I would continue for another week from there, looking at April 1st as a potential opening date, giving us a couple weeks to really balance this out and get an understanding. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, let's talk, let's talk to Dana, I know at least, thank you.
Okay, that's fine.
Mr. Chairman, it, it seems like, Mr. Deroche, and you have two, two separate opinions on how we move forward with the golf course, would you, would you entertain a motion, if Mr. Deroche would like to entertain a motion, to keep the golf course closed until April 1st? I think you.
Mr. Deroche, if you want to make a motion, go ahead.
Well, I make a motion to continue the closure of the Acushet River Valley Golf Course until April 1st.
I'll second that.
For the discussion, all in favor?
Aye. And I'll work with Dana, and I'll still work with Dana, I'll still work with Dana and Julie on a plan for April 1st, but I think that some of the conversation I had with Dana this morning, it wasn't very clear that there was a real clear cut plan, so five days, I don't think, you know, talking about kind of hole through the doors and all the windows and things of that nature, you know, give us time to really figure this thing. The Board of Selectmen are providing, if we decide to reopen on April 1st, we are providing a safe environment for our people.
Yeah, please. Anything else to do with that?
Roger, I couldn't hear. Was it in favor? Oh, Roger, were you in favor of that vote?
Say that one more time.
Were you in, voting in favor of that vote, the vote to close the golf course?
I, I didn't vote against it.
Okay.
Roger, the only other thing that I brought up, and I, I'm sorry, but we're, we're kind of trying to think of everything that we need to think about, at least, at least from my perspective, and that is of the planning board with continuances of their meetings. There's a bylaw that's in place where if they reviewed a plan and it's not acted upon within 90 days, it's automatically approved. Ms. Hebert said she would check with Town Council to see if that would hold any water if that was the case, but I'm asking Ms. Hebert to communicate with the planning board and see in how many of these subdivision plans or whatever plans they've, they've reviewed in the last 90 days, if they're gonna come up on, on any kind of a roadblock as far as that goes if they can't hold meetings.
Well, we should have state of emergency at both the state level and the town level. I, I hope that supersedes any, any, you know, 90-day clock.
I, I agree.
Given the circumstances.
I, I agree.
It must be upon us that, you know, anybody that's in that circumstance, that's counting on 90 days, it might not hurt to send them a letter that says, you know, hey, guys, the clock, that 90-day clock is suspended, so, you know, we, we, we're putting you on notice that, you know, don't be counting on that. It doesn't apply given, given these circumstances.
Right. Yeah, that's what Ms. Hebert and I said, that's why I just asked her to check with Town Council to make sure that that would be the case, that this coronavirus would kind of put that fire out if it came about.
We do have a national.
I think the formal communication to whoever the proponents are would be appropriate, though.
Correct, thank you.
Well, the same one. Chief Gallagher, you have a comment?
Mr. Chief, Fire Chief Gallagher's coming to the podium, Mr. Cabral.
Gentlemen, thank you, Ms. Hebert, Ms. Leonard, morning. First, I just wanted to commend the Board of Selectmen, Ms. Hebert, Ms. Leonard, for the leadership that you're, you're providing to the town. This is uncharted territory for all of us, but it is fluid. To say that it is changing daily would miss probably the 15 changes that I was confronted with yesterday. So this is a, a time where leaders lead, and I think Acushet is being well-served. I will tell you that the direction that we're receiving from the Office of Emergency Medical Services on how we interact with patients is also changing. We have a directive on how we are to respond and engage with folks who are demonstrating either respiratory or fever symptoms. You'll see our EMTs putting on all of their PPE, mask, gown, gloves, and eye protection. We have a very good protocol in place, and we've used that so far. This week, we've had the need to, to enter a home at that high level. Fortunately, the patient is doing well. Out of an abundance of caution, however, I have set the standard slightly higher. Effective today, any patient that we engage with, anyone at all, a broken ankle, a stubbed toe, a car accident, we will immediately be applying a surgical mask to the patient. We simply don't know, they're telling us two to three to four days where you can be asymptomatic and contagious at the same time. We're not gonna risk our staff. The, we are a small department, as you know, losing two, three, four people who may be exposed to a 14-day quarantine would be devastating to us. So we are raising that level just to let the folks, for you to know, but to let the folks at home know as well. We're not trying to scare anyone, we're simply saying that it's in the best interest of our staff and for them as well. I may be contagious right now. I may be in that two or three-day asymptomatic carrier state. So I want to protect the patient from me and me from them. So we're gonna continue that until further notice. Our PPE, Personal Protective Equipment, stockpile is adequate for the time being, given the call volume that we have now. It's not going to last forever. We have requests made to some of our vendors, it's in transit, a lot of it is backlogged. I talked with Chief Richmond this morning, he's experiencing the same. We don't expect there to be an airdrop of masks and gowns and gloves from the federal and state government. We're in line, just like they're in line. But we may, we've had a couple of residents contact us to donate N95 respirators that they have from their businesses, and we appreciate that. So we are open to accepting those donations if folks are so inclined, but our staff is adequately protected and will be for the foreseeable future. Depending, Mr. Gaspar, on how this plays out in the next couple of weeks, you know, our stockpile may diminish, but we'll address that then. Yes, sir.
But Chief, on Monday, you mentioned there was a downturn in calls over the weekend. Is that standard?
That is holding true, and we are very thankful for that.
You're experiencing three, four a day, or is there a number?
Three or four to five was our average. I think the ambulance moved once yesterday. And, you know, that's a function of, I think, people wanting to stay out of the ER. St. Luke's Hospital is, I don't want to say overwhelmed, but it is extremely busy. They are, they have their own planning, they have their own processes in place. They'll be segregating respiratory and fever patients from, as I understand, from non. So this is all in a state of flux. The less people that go to the hospital, the better. And it sounds like, you know, the, the folks in Acushet are heeding the request of staying home, being healthy, and just kind of letting this play itself out.
Very good.
Okay, thank you.
You, too.
Mr. Chairman, are you ready for a motion to adjourn?
Aye, aye. I'm just thinking, yeah.
Good enthusiasm. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Happy Easter to everybody.